Have one board member, Eric Boyer, who is calling in this evening. And perhaps he said he was going to be able to make it live, maybe not, maybe. But right now, Ms. Boyer, can you hear us and can we hear you?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
I should be coming out there very shortly. So like I said, I just got home from work a little late and just making sure the family's good before I get out there. So I should see you all shortly.
Okay, thanks. And you can just continue to call in and when you arrive, you can hang up. And sounds good. Thanks for that. So yeah, well, Dr. Mann is saying might not be all that long. It's up to you, Eric, whatever you, whatever you want to do. We're fine with you calling in. Appreciate seeing your face, whatever's most convenient for you. Logged in for, and I have to hold this button while I do it for visitor comment. All right, so board attendance is, everyone is in attendance either virtually or in person as we just covered, except Ms. Cruz, who is not in attendance this evening. The next thing we have on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. But before, before we get into that, I'd just like to just make a quick announcement for the pledge, which is, as many of you know, Southernly has lost a beloved educator and administrator with the passing of Mr. Jack Hanke, our middle school assistant principal. Mr. Hanke exemplified dedication and compassion, working every day to improve the lives of each student in his building and ensuring they felt welcomed, safe and valued in our school community. So after the Pledge of Allegiance, I invite you to join me in a moment of silence to honor and celebrate his memory. And now, having said that, could you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Like I said, Mr. Hanke's legacy will live on in the students and staff whose lives he touched, and he will be deeply missed. All right, now, I said I was going to try to pull up my visitor comment tab. Until I successfully do so, Ms. Lowly, could I ask you if we have any visitor comment currently signed in? All right, one visitor comment, thank you, Lisa Maloney. Yeah, we won't start timing until we figure out the mic.
I think we're good. Let me just make sure, because I am short. Does that, can everybody hear me okay? Okay, good. My name is Lisa Maloney, and I'm a parent of two students in the Southernly High School District, one of whom is a senior. I'm here tonight to talk about graduation. I see that the proposal for this year's graduation with Lehigh University is June the 9th, a Monday. I hope tonight the board is able to shed some light on why this year's graduation is proposed for a Monday, for the first time in over a decade. The past 10 years have been Fridays. And also, this year's graduation is 10 days later than last year. So I'm hoping to understand the rationale behind that. The last time, sorry, the current proposal for June 9th graduation is disappointing for multiple reasons. A Monday event disrupts the entire rest of the week for graduates and their families. Scheduling conflicts with work, travel plans, and other commitments post-graduation are much more difficult to manage for beginning-of-the-week ceremony as opposed to an end-of-the-week ceremony. Out-of-town family will likely require additional days off to travel to the ceremony if they're able to attend at all now. Many extended families may need to choose between attending the ceremony and leaving shortly thereafter, or skipping the ceremony altogether unfortunately, and coming to see the graduate and their families at a different time. For whatever reason, Stabler Arena could not be reserved for May 31st or June 6th. This is a perfect time to revisit the potential use of our amazing stadium for this type of event. I sincerely hope that all other venues and dates will be vetted before a final decision has been made. Our seniors deserve to have as much of their family here as possible to celebrate their last 13 years of extremely hard work. Please do not deny them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. Now I have the visitor comments sheet pulled up. Thanks to Ms. Lowly for her assistance there. I don't see any other visitor comments at this time. And so, moving on in our agenda. The voting item to which was being referred is coming up later. So you're all welcome to stay and your discussion on that point, or Dr. Mann has anything else to offer. But moving on to...
I'm sure it's superintendent, but my screen is locked, and so I can't scroll down. Go ahead, Dr. Mann.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Gaiman. Thank you, Mrs. Gaiman.
I knew there was something I needed to scroll. No, actually, yes, I do have, after visitor comment, now that I can scroll, could we please vote on the, first I have an executive session summary from the board solicitor, and then we'll vote on the minutes. Then we'll go to Dr. Mann.
Thank you, Ms. Gaiman. On October 1st of 2024, the Facilities Committee held an executive session to discuss possible litigation. On October 22nd, the Education Committee held an executive session to discuss personnel. And tonight, prior to the board meeting, the full board met in an executive session to discuss student-related issues and personnel items.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I have approval of board minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd and October 14th as attached. Thank you, Mr. Carney, for the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Boyer, for the second. Any questions or comments on these items before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, abstentions? Everyone said aye, including Mr. Boyer, so motion carries unanimously. Now, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Gaiman. The only one issue I had, and I do want to thank you for your moment of silence and thoughtful words of condolence to Mr. Hanke, I just wanted to add to that and say that it was a tremendously great loss to the school district. I want to thank our administrative team, our professional staff team, the vendors from St. Luke's and the Karen Foundation, all of whom, who, you know, worked very hard to support a building and ultimately a community in need. And while this has been a great tragedy, as Mr. Hanke, I think, would most appreciate it was also an opportunity to come together as an organization to celebrate who he was and the great contributions he had. So that really was my only remark. But in light of the questions, we could either discuss the Lehigh issue now if there are questions, or we could wait to the motion. I'm very happy to, you know, try to respond to questions at either point.
I'd like to talk about that if it's okay. Could we just skip ahead to that?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. Do we just want to have a conversation outside, or do we want to have a motion, or we'll just have the conversation now when we get to the item, we'll decide then what to do with the actual voting item? Does that sound good, Chris? Okay, great. Yeah, go ahead, whatever questions you had, go.
Do you mind just responding to the visitor comments about why that date was chosen?
Yes, so, no, we certainly recognize that Monday is not nearly as good a day as Friday. I mean, that's a very obvious thing. The, the reason that we did not have it on Friday is because there was a conflict with the Bethlehem School District, who is the largest school district. Lehigh is located within the geographic area of Bethlehem, and Bethlehem will be there on that Friday. And so, the thought was the next available...
Which Friday? Which Friday are we talking about?
I think Friday, the 6th, right? The ideal date would be Friday, the 6th, for us. But Bethlehem is using Stabler Arena at that time. So the thought was that while we preferred the 6th, the following Monday, the 9th is where we currently have, is what we currently have on the agenda, right? Now, it would be possible for us to move the graduation to Friday, the 12th, later on that same week. Now, we have heard, kind of anecdotally, that that's not a popular option among our students, because many of them just kind of want to go, you know, on, on their trips, their vacation, their senior week, wherever it happens to be. And the thought would be that if they wait for, and again, it's something, we can do that very easily, we're happy to do. But we think that actually would be less popular among the students than having it on the Monday. The question came up, could we move it to Friday, the 30th? Now, the Friday, the 30th, we run into trouble with end-of-the-year examinations with respect to AP exams and a number of other, you know, very serious complications. And, and it is true that, like last year, we graduated on May 30th. This year, it's June 9th. Last year happened to be, just by the way the calendar goes, the earliest, you know, time when we could have possibly graduated. But if you look back over, like, the last 10 years or so, or graduations, they've always been, you know, early, early June, 7th, 8th, 9th, that kind of thing. So we are, we are not at an atypically late date. Last year was actually at a typically early date, on the lower end of what we would, we would do. So, so that's kind of where we are left. You know, at this point, it would be very for us to move graduation to the stadium. It is something we could do, but for example, we'd have to buy all the chairs and do all the things that we would prefer to do, like over the summer, or even, you know, last spring. So the, the thought of doing it at our stadium, while not out of the realm, it would end up being like the sole focus of our staff as we move into, you know, the winter months. So right now, we think the best of the bad options, or less preferable options, would be Monday, the 9th. We certainly would be happy to move it to the 12th. And while we could move it to the 30th of May, we're not recommending that because of the impact it would have on end-of-the-year testing.
Instead of purchasing the...
In regards to it, so, I'm just throwing this out there. So I hear that the Friday, the preferable Friday that you mentioned, there's another school district, Bethlehem area, I think is what you mentioned. The, the 12th, yeah, I, I get the difference between the 30th and the 12th, I understand that. Has, since they have graduation on Friday, has anything been talked about or discussed about the options of even having it on like Saturday?
Mr. Boyer, I don't, I don't think that has come up. That's the first I've heard that suggested. I'm not sure if it's possible. We could certainly look into it.
Correct. Once again, I don't know what conversations I've had with, with Lehigh, and what their capacity and what their capabilities are, or what other, other events there are. Just from listening, it sounds like we're only talking about Fridays or weekdays. But if, if, if they're open to having like a Saturday, that would potentially, if possible, right? Some of the concerns and stuff that brought up, and plus, some of the challenges brought up that moving it earlier, right, could be potentially curbed from being a problem.
Coupled with that, if it's in a stadium, you jeopardize having a rain date, which I think would become a weekend event if it's a rain date, if I'm not mistaken, if we were to have it outside.
And while we would obviously hope for good weather, there's nothing to say we wouldn't be having it on Monday if we had two days of rain, you know, or that kind of thing. So...
No, I'm saying if we were to select the stadium, and it was slated for a Friday, what is typically a rain date for an outdoor event with a rain date?
The next day, the next day.
Exactly. So it's a Saturday. So I, I guess with that, that being said, what would be the harm in potentially having it on a Saturday versus the Friday?
Well, yeah, we, not claiming that we want Friday or anything at all. We just want the best date for, for our students and for our families. And so, we've not looked into Saturday, because people have been saying, hey, we want it on Friday. And so, we, we could easily look into, I mean, just a thought would be, could you maybe perhaps provisionally approve the contract, and then allow us flexibility to get back to you with whatever dates are available, and then we can make a decision about which date would be best?
Is, is, is it possible to, I mean, could you explain to the board what, what other, if there are other venues, or what provisionally approve? I mean, I don't know that. What I'm hearing is we'd like to explore other options, but I, I sense your urgency about booking Stabler so that it doesn't book up? Or is, is that, is there a way that it could be held so that we could explore these other options? Like, I think Saturday is a great idea. I think looking potentially if there are other venues to be explored, you know, and into another inside venue locally.
Could be Ag Hall.
Right, like, exactly, like Ag Hall, Steve, yeah. So could we, because that combination, in addition to, is it even available on the 31st? I mean, I know you said AP exams. I guess then not so much AP exams, but, because those would be over by then, but the final exams is what you're saying? AP's, AP's ends on like... Okay, because I thought, most of the time, I, my recollection is that seniors, that last week, that underclassmen are available, seniors aren't really taking any exams anyway. They're pretty much done by, before the 31st. Now, I understand the difficulty of perhaps processing those final exam grades, in which case it would be have to clearly stated to a student, like, we will let you walk in this as provisional, but you might not actually, you know, there might be other obligations you might have to fulfill. But I know other, other schools have done that in the past. And we have even encountered this in the past, when we have had to decide even between, I'll bring up two other options, that I just, I feel like, I don't want to rush into provisionally voting on something because of the issues that were raised tonight, and just questions as a parent of a former graduate that I understand, I'm going into this. One is, will we have, regardless of exam dates and being able to reschedule that, will we have, in prior years, we had to do a calculation and kind of a roll the dice of do we have enough hours and days that the seniors, we're okay with that? So are we okay with that if we would have a graduation date of May 31st, and perhaps we could look at rearranging?
The other.
Yeah, or June 7th, either, right. But if for some reason that's, Stabler isn't available on the 7th, perhaps we could look at the 31st. Mr. Boyer's walking in now, so we can hang up and have him live. Great, thanks, Mr.... You don't, you don't get a red carpet, Eric. So all of those different options that we've brought up here, could we explore those instead ahead of just, you know, proceeding with this, or explain to us why that wouldn't be, could we table, explain to us the disadvantage of tabling this tonight, and perhaps, you know, even if we had to call a meeting to vote upon this, to schedule a graduation forum?
I, I would only say, I would not want to be left maybe holding the bag, right? And say, well, we didn't, like, because we won't meet again for another two weeks or so. And so, I, I think that, first of all, I would go and defer to the board, call members on the phone and find out what it is, what we want to do. I wouldn't make a decision without consulting the board. However, so my thought is if we approve the Lehigh contract, and we go back to them and say, look, this is the, the 9th, but we won't sign it and give it to them until we have, you know, a sense of what the board would like to do. Otherwise, I would just have a concern, having Lehigh with a date, I don't know who would come up and ask, or whatever the thing would be in demand. But, you know, if, if we don't approve it tonight, and when I say approve it, I don't mean approve it as I'm going to sign it and have them sign it and hand it to them. But to have, without my having the authority to do that, once a date is established, it leaves kind of an open-ended situation with Lehigh, and I don't know what demand the, the center is in.
Do you know if May 31st, if Lehigh is available, or if, or any other dates it is, or a Saturday?
May 30th, it is available, but that's a Friday. And that's where we would have, our, our administration feels that that would be problematic with respect to end-of-the-year testing. The 9th is obviously available, because as we have on here. And the 12th is available, which is the Friday, I think, of that same week. But again, that has its own set of problems as well. Beyond that, we have not explored Saturday or other venues.
So if it's holding the date now, could it hold, I mean, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with making, voting on something this evening on that date without having more information of what the options are. Because I also don't understand, I guess, what that gives. If we vote to approve a contract, it's voted to approve. I guess right now, what we're kind of saying is provisionally, that could be an option, but we'd like to explore others. Like, you have that from us now. Those are my thoughts.
My, my only concern is if, at some point in the next two weeks before our meeting, and I don't know this to be the case, or even a risk, if Lehigh comes and says, we would like to book this, now, or we have someone else has approached us, we're going to sign with them, then I would have to wait for a board meeting to have that agreement ready to go. And, and maybe that's not an issue at all, and maybe it would be, I don't know.
Okay. Maybe is any other day, Ms. Thorpe, I see you're...
Right, I just, a few questions and just walk it, walk me through. Do our seniors, and I know, I understand end-of-year testing, that'll be a follow-up question, do our seniors end, like, their actual last day before grades K through 11?
The 9th is our, is the last day of school. And yes, seniors finish sometime before then as far as wrapping up end-of-the-year activities. But I've, it is my understanding that on May 30th, that is a, a big Russian challenge with the end-of-the-year testing.
So May 30th is part of our testing day? Like, if we had an assessment testing calendar, we would see May 30th for finals or AP exams or something?
I believe that to be the case, yes.
Well, I for one would not recommend conflicting with end-of-year testing and other aspects of that. That's a primary school, that's the primary objective of this institution.
I agree, Mr. Mann. I'm trying to understand what the conflict is. If students are taking their exams during the day on a Friday, and an AP exam during the day.
What is, what is our current final exam testing?
That's what I'm trying to get at, that Friday, the 30th, how many seniors?
Right. What's our current testing schedule for finals? Do we know that? Is it on the high school calendar?
I apologize, I didn't articulate my question. What is the conflict on Friday? I understand end-of-year exams are critical, but the end of year, are they impacting the seniors on that Friday, the 30th?
I think you have all the grade processing and everything else, not like, for example, Dr. Trinkle, you know, on the 30th, you're still processing administrative aspects of the grades.
Listen, and I don't have the specific schedule. We did confer with the high school staff today, and they are very concerned. And it says it's not an insurmountable hurdle, but it's a very challenging one that they would prefer not to have. As far as the specific dates, that we do not have, and I'm not sure if this exam schedule has been created yet, but in consultation with administration, it does create serious issues for them and their scheduling. The last day of class for everyone is June 6th. Oh.
For seniors.
Oh, for seniors?
Yeah.
This I don't know.
Because like, that last day of class for third graders isn't even really a last day of class for high schoolers, because it's a makeup day. So if you've, if you're a high school student, even a freshman, who's completed all your obligations, you don't turn to school on the 9th regardless. I mean, a third grader would come for that final hurrah bus rally. But I will also tell you, and as we're considering other dates, two concerns are, one, graduation doesn't just affect seniors, but it also affects the underclassmen who perform. And so, how does that correlate with rehearsal schedules during their own exams? Because historically, the seniors would have graduated, and then, you know, that rehearsal schedule for performances related to graduation doesn't always conflict with final exams for underclassmen. But, and as far as, I, I don't think any of us are exploring a later date, like the 12th or the 13th, whatever was mentioned. But I would think that the concern there would be that the teacher contract that's past our Academy Day date, and so the teacher contract would end, and I don't know that we'd have, June, June 10th is the last Academy Day? Yeah, so we can't really... Right, so I remember historically, when we've looked at this as a board, we've said we can't really hold graduation without teachers and adults kind of helping. So it could be past the CBA dates, would be my other concern. But I don't hear any of us wanting to go later. But yeah, if we could have information like what that last senior final day is, like Mr. Reynolds asked, what is the last senior day, that obligation day? Could you, yeah, could you use your mic? Wait, wait, you have to hold it while you talk.
I think we need to look at other venues. I know that in the past, we did it at De Sales University. Have we looked at De Sales University? Have we looked at other university options, or other facilities that may be able to accommodate that Friday? That seems to be preferred by the community and the parents. That's all. I, I, I respect the teachers and the administration's decision to have enough time to process finals.
And the 7th would be Saturday, if we were still looking at a Saturday.
I think we should still at least go back to Lehigh and see if they could still accommodate the 7th. We, everybody said that they liked the Lehigh setup and the Lehigh environment. So if they can accommodate the 7th, and it's the next day right after, the only thing is, is I don't know if they're going to have concern with the fact that they'll have a graduation the night before, in terms of turning the venue back around for setup. That I don't know. It's not my prerogative to answer, but it's worth asking, at least.
Okay, so it sounds like the board in general, and if it's a matter of losing a venue entirely, Mike, I think the board doesn't have a problem coming together for some sort of emergency session to give you what you need. But I think right now, I'm hearing from everyone that we'd really like to try to accommodate family schedules and traditions in both, and also the high school schedule, whatever we can do to see if we have other options. So I think that's kind of where we're headed. And does anyone, so, having said all that, good, okay, great. So when we get to that item on the agenda, can we just say, well, can we have a motion to, do we need a motion to table it now? Do we, we don't need a motion to table it, we can just skip it? We'll just skip it. Our solicitor says we can just skip it. We're going to move right along, and we'll just consider that at a future, a future time without limiting our options, Mike, yeah.
If we're finished with that, well, that concludes my report. I do want to introduce our student representative tonight, first for, for this year, Orin Bossert. Orin, are you ready? Okay, well, the stage is yours. Thank you for coming, and we look forward to your report.
All right. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah, so feel free to adjust that if you want to.
Just wanted to start by introducing myself. My name is Orin Bossert. I am a senior at Southern Lehigh. I grew up in the district, and I am currently the overall captain of our speech and debate team. I am involved in several aspects of the school, and a familiar face for the board. So I will be the, this month's student rep. Going forward for the following months, Mr. Miller has met with his principal advisory meeting, and they have decided that for following months, students interested in being the student rep for that board's month, will be able to apply through a Google form that Mr. Miller will send out via email at the beginning of each month. And two students each month will be chosen to be the school board reps. So just for future months, that is the current plan of how that's going to be conducted. But first, to get into the student report, in terms of our music program, we would like to congratulate the following students on their success for making the 2025 PMEA District 10 Chorus versus Matilda Snyder, who placed second on Alto 1, and Patrick D'Amico placing eighth on Tenor 2. And then, for our drama department, on Tuesday, October 29th, the Southernly High High School Drama Department will hold their Senior Citizen Show of Knock Knock. The play will open to the public on October 30th and run through November 2nd. All shows are at 7:00 PM. For our speech and debate team, on Saturday, October 26th, our speech and debate team competed at Phillipsburg High School. Student Congress did very well with Aiden Vedder placing second, and Logan Schneider placing eighth. The team will be competing here this following Saturday, and on the November 9th, the team will compete at Dallas Town. Now for our athletics, the boys cross-country team finished the regular season 28 to 0. The girls team finished 26 to 2. The boys and girls ran in the Colonial League Championships on the 16th, with the boys claiming the title of Colonial League champs, and our girls taking third place. The boys and girls teams ran at District 10 Meet on the 23rd, with the boys team taking fourth overall and sending two runners off to states, Miles Eders and Greg Rabino. The girls team took third overall and is sending on three runners to states, Kaylee Lenhart, Ellie Kane, and Zoe Vezinov. The state cross-country meet is on November 2nd. As for field hockey, the team won their District 10 semifinal game on Thursday against Bangor 8 to 0. The team is back in action in the District 10 Finals this Wednesday, the 30th, against Salisbury. The game is at Whitehall School at 6:05. As for football, on Friday night, October 25th, the boys took on Northwestern Lehigh for senior night and the end of 2025 regular season. The boys played an incredible tough game and came up short 23 to 17. The team will be the number one seed in District 10 playoffs. Playoffs begin this Thursday when the team hosts the number eight seed, Jim Thorpe. As for golf, it is the Colonial Season League and District 11 Championships for the 2024 season, back-to-back district championships, to be exact. On Wednesday, the 16th, our boys competed in the PIAA Team Subregional against LaSalle. Unfortunately, the boys... Unfortunately, the boys came up a few strokes short and did not make the team state tournament. The team did send two individuals to the state tournament at Penn State on October 21st and 22nd. Caleb Walsh finished, finished tied for 36 out of 72 and Lexi Miller finished 26 out of 36. As for boys soccer, on Wednesday night, Wednesday night, October 23rd, the boys took on Wilson Area as the number two seed on the District 10 playoffs. The boys cruised to a victory with a 7-0 score. On Wednesday, October 30th, the boys take on Jim Thorpe at Katusakwa High School at 7:00 PM in the District 10 finals. For girls soccer, on Thursday night, October 24th, the girls took on Blue Mountain in the District 10 tournament. The girls unfortunately lost a heartbreaker 1-0 and have officially ended their season. Girls tennis, the girls finished third in the Colonial League and competed hard in the district playoffs and unfortunately came up a little short. As for girls volleyball, on Wednesday night, October 23rd, the girls as the number two seed in District 10 playoffs took on Notre Dame Green Pond and won convincingly three sets to one. Today, Monday, October 28th, the girls are taking on Pottsville at Katusakwa High School in the District 10 semifinals. The girls are still undefeated on this year. And for some important dates, the last day of the first quarter is the 31st. On the 7th of November will be an LCTI showcase tours. On the 12th, there will be powder puff games. On the 25th will be club photo day. The 26th will, parent teacher conferences will be held from 8 to, 5 to 8:00 PM and letters to parents will go out on the week of November 11th and beyond. On the 27th, we have, we will have early dismissal for students at 11:25 AM. From the 28th to December 2nd, there will be no school for students as for fall break. And then from December 23rd to January 1st, we will have no school for students for winter break. For January 16th to the 22nd, we will have our midterm exams. On the 17th, we will have no school for students as for an ACT 80 day. On the 20th, no school for students will be because of Martin Luther King Jr. Day and January 23rd is the last day of the second quarter. Thank you.
Thank you, Orin, very much. Orin, I think, I, I don't object, but Orin reserves the right to object and not answer if she so desires. Would you, Mary Joy, could you?
Apologize, I'm not used to these new microphones. What's a powder puff game?
The power puff games? I'm not entirely sure.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a great credit to you. That is a very great credit to you, yes.
Of all the things I'm involved with, sports is not one of them, so not my expertise.
I love the answer. I don't know. We could all learn from that answer.
Who has the answer at the table?
I have the answer. It's, uh, girls form teams and then the boy football players coach them. It's grades nine versus 10th versus 11th versus 12th.
And it's, it's, it's for football.
Football, yep.
Yeah. And it's, it's, it's a very well attended, you know, they have teams every year who want to play, so. But I gotta say, I love that answer. Adults should give that answer more often, Orin. Well done. All right. Anything else under superintendent's report, Dr. Mann? Okay, great. Moving on to, we have under curriculum, student and staff services, we have a motion to approve the appointment of Alloy Five Architecture for that attached letter of engagement, you can click on and see, for architectural services for the purpose of all-day kindergarten feasibility study. And of course, this agreement is pending solicitor review. I know that the education committee has worked, been working on this, so I guess I'll ask for a motion in a second, but then we'll hear from, you know, Dr. Trinkle and Mr. Carney is the chair, just to let us know how you feel this proceeding. Could I have a motion to this effect first?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Torba. All right. Floor is yours to explain or any, field any questions. I know Dr. Trinkle and the education committee and Dr. Salmetto have been working hard, as well as I'm sure other departments on getting this feasibility study up and running for full day K.
Yes, we, we kind of started this process in the, in the August timeframe where the RFP was sent out for deadline, second week in September, I think it was the 20th was, was written in there. We received two letters or two proposals, I guess we'll call them, or two expressions of interest, which were very thorough. We also, before our interviews with both firms, we met with both elementary schools, Dr. Mann, myself, Dr. Salmetto, with principal support, met with staff to discuss whatever they wanted to discuss about the process, which I thought was a very healthy conversation, very critical conversation, because they'll be a huge, they'll play a huge role in this process with us. We interviewed two firms on the 22nd and through that process, we, we kind of concluded collectively, I'd say, pretty much with a, with a strong consensus that Alloy Five kind of met our standard for this process or exceeded that standard. Not that the other firm didn't do a wonderful job, we just thought that Alloy Five provided a much more comprehensive kind of current approach to this process. So that was the recommendation from that. Both firms provided a, a presentation, we were able to, able to have a conversation back and forth, ask some follow-up questions. I think it was pretty straightforward.
I would just add, I just wanted to thank Eric and Melissa for being on the committee. It was a healthy discussion and for Karen and Mike being there and also having some great input. Everybody participated. I do have the request for proposal here if anybody's interested. I have their response from Alloy Five and the presentation that they made that, that night if anybody is interested. And again, it was a unanimous decision. We liked the locality, that they were over in Bethlehem, the other place was out in Harrisburg. And there were, the cost was nicer. Not, not that that was a primary, but that was a, you know, it was a nice little bonus too.
And just for, just for the education of the community and with those tuning in, what does a feasibility study cover? Like what kinds of just really top level questions that we're looking to answer and get out of this, just so the community knows that we're not asking deep diving questions that are going to get us full day K next year? This is just the first, like what are we getting out of this study exactly?
Well, we asked them to include that in the attachment. So they're going to start with a needs assessment, a cost analysis, go through facility and capacity, staffing, professional development, they're going to review curriculum instruction needs, projected enrollments to, is, will be added, future enrollments, community impact and support, and a financial analysis and funding for, from start to finish. So it is a multi-year project, which I think, you know, we've made pretty clear from education committee meetings that this is not, based on this request, this is not something that we're looking, or will be able to.
Launch next year. Yes, yes, okay.
Now, if we kick this off, you know, the data collection will start instantly.
Right.
And then that was kind of like a three to six month, depending on what we, what we find, what we need, we may need to expand, you know, our asks of them through the data analysis, but, you know, once we kick this off, we're going to hit the ground running just like we did with the library.
Great, great, thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, Dr. Trinkle, then there's eight items within that proposal then will come out as a deliverable in a report, if you will. So you'll have all those items outlined and available for use in strategic planning.
Correct. And they actually provided two examples for us to review during the interview process.
Great, thanks.
We were excited about the amount of information that we're going to get, no matter what happens in the future, we're going to get a lot of information. And this is that we definitely asked about was getting stakeholder and community input on this and how to do that the best way and that they have some ideas and they're, they're also working on the library feasibility. So there was some, you know, they, they know this, who we're working with.
Yes, Ms. Reiner.
And looking at the full proposal, I didn't see anything with regard to a promise for demographics and enrollment, enrollment projections. And I think that if you're going to sign a contract with somebody, those deliverables need to be spelled out. I would also like to see timeframe spelled out. I don't think this can go on ad infinitum like the library. We've been talking about the library for three years and these consultants can go on and spin it and spin it and spin it forever and a day and we never get anything done. So I would recommend getting those, that added to the actual contract with specific timeframes for those deliverables.
We did confirm that.
I understand it's confirmed, but it's not in the proposal that we are voting on. And I don't know how you decide on full day kindergarten without first starting on demographics and enrollment projections.
I, I think, I, I don't disagree. I think that was probably part of their needs assessment, the way they would capture that if, as it was described to us.
And I, and I, we actually raised this issue with the architect and he did respond today saying, Mike, we will include all the published enrollment data in the study. We will use our own logic and method to confirm or disagree with the state's projections. So yes, we will include them, which means the demographic projections, but it is not an independent third-party study. Talked a little bit about this at our interview, let me know if you have answers to any questions. So they do intend to use statewide data, which is done based on live births from the Department of Ed, and then they'll use their own methodology.
Okay, I'll trust that. But where are the deadlines for these deliverables? I couldn't quite find it when I looked at it.
I think Mr. Carney has different information than the attachment. Ms. Reinhardt?
Right, because he's.
I requested the full proposal and took a look at it today, but I didn't see it.
I know they talked about the three to six most likely five months is what it usually takes.
Yeah, because both, both firms were about the same timeline, because we asked that specifically on timeline and deadline.
I have no problem. That's great. But, you know, when you're signing a contract for, especially for a consultant, I think you want to nail those things down.
Well, right now, there's also pending solicitor review. We gave some initial feedback to Dr. Mann today, so we can certainly go back to them and with the revisions.
I'll accept that if, if you please consider that when you have your discussion.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Reinhardt's. I think you can put delivery of weeks or a range of weeks. I think that would be acceptable.
And, and, and they were very forthcoming in saying that at the interview, so I'm sure that's not a problem. I, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
I think we can, we confirm that up.
Okay, great. And, Mr. Reinhardt, that answers your questions and concerns with that solicitor review of dates and deadlines or perhaps what you're reading right now?
Yeah.
Looks like it's covered.
It's like a timeline, it's not specific, we will have this at, this, on this date. It's a three to six months.
Yeah, but to the, to the point, a typical proposal for this sort of thing has weeks for delivery. They can easily put that in and they'll, they'll know, they know how many weeks it's going to take. It'll be a no-brainer for them to put that in and just so we can at least hold their feet to the fire if they're lagging due to other diversions within their organization.
And right now, we have a bi-weekly meeting for the library. I suspect that we'll have a similar approach, if not more frequent, depending on how quickly we can provide some of the data that they're requesting. We have no issue when we've asked for more information to receive it very quickly.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right. As previously discussed, we're skipping over item 5B and moving on.
See, I just have a quick, just a question for our solicitor. Since it's on the agenda, why don't we have to table?
Because when you table something, it means you're going to bring it back at another point.
Sorry, could you, yeah, when you table a matter, it is that you're going to bring it back at another point of time during this meeting? We're not bringing it back. What? Yes.
During the same meeting?
Yes. Yes. So you can bring this back at any point of times if, if not tabled. Typically tabling is that you're going to revisit it at some point of time during the same meeting. You're just not taking action on, so Dr. Mann can, yes, and Dr. Mann can put it on the next agenda.
All right. Moving on to item six, special education and student services. Does anyone object if I take item six, A through C together? That's the Bayata Contract for School Nursing Services to approve the 24-25 school year, all these, our pending solicitor review. Also the GHR Education Staffing Agreement for the 24-25 school year and the Pediatric Therapeutic Services Therapy Services Agreement Addendum for Speech and Language Therapy Services. Any objection to taking those together? Seeing none, can I have a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wayack. Any questions or comments on these items? All right. Seeing none. Thank you for, to both Dr. Mann and the Special Education Department for providing an explanation on these contracts earlier to the school board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven, A Technology. We have the Berks County Intermediate Unit and Salymania School District Support Service Agreement for Infinite Campus Integration. Again, pending solicitor review. I believe we had touched upon this at our last meeting, Dr. Mann, and this is an extension of those services.
Yes, last meeting, we approved, we were ready to roll with this. Then, as we were interacting with Berks, they need to get into our actual infinite campus system, which raises very important student confidentiality issues. And so this is an ancillary agreement to the one that we approved last month. Mrs. Boyer is taking a good look at it to make sure that we are, you know, in good shape with respect to FERPA and we want to get this signed so they can continue in their, their, in their process. This is again particularly focused on the challenges we're facing with special education, but this is very much a prerequisite before they get moving within our system.
Thank you very much. Any, did I ask for a motion on this already? I forget. I don't think I did. Could I have a motion to this effect?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. And a second, I heard it, I didn't know who. Thank you, Dr. Wayack. All right, now, any other questions or comments about this item? No? Oh, yes, Ms. Torba.
Just to be fully aware, once, now that this is passed, we can immediately begin our partnership with Berks IU?
Yes, it's begun already. We've been working on it, but this is, this has been a, like, as this calip, whoa, we can't do anything without this. And then, and then, you know, I, I think Mrs. Moyer had a few suggestions. I'm going to lean on Berks and perhaps even Mrs. Moyer to get this done as quickly as possible. So at this next possible moment, we can get this docu thing signed, it's a docu-signed document with Berks and then they can get right into the special ed applications that we so much want them to help us with.
Thank you for clarifying that, just tagging on to what we were talking about with Alloy Five and the feasibility. And I heard, you know, future projections of enrollment, I would venture that that feasibility would also want maybe prior year numbers as well, enrollment to take in account. And that, we may need to lean on Berks IU for that assistance with prior year records, because we still are having difficulty accessing some prior year records. So I'm concerned that we can, we're moving forward, that it's already happening and that we can take full advantage of that partnership to address accessibility of some prior year records.
Yes.
And in tandem with the Alloy Five agreement.
And we've actually also made some progress on that issue, separate and distinct from our work with Berks IU. So we're, we are, it's now resolved, but we, with respect to counselor notes and some other, other things, we have them and we've been working on how we not only access them, but then get them into infinite campus and we have made some positive steps in that area and we will continue to make them.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that and I'm sure there'll be more questions, you know, around the technology of all those years of history, so that we always are prepared if a student, a graduate, an alumni ever comes back, meaning, or even our current community members may need a child, their child's previous records and for our staff to have that holistic view of their incoming students for those historical records.
We recognize that's a very high priority and one that we, again, are making some cautious progress. We are far better off, Mrs. Torba, than when we last spoke on this issue.
Thank you for sharing.
And that's also, that's a really good point. Thanks for raising it, Ms. Torba. The. And that's also, that's a really good point. Thanks for raising it, Ms. Torba. The, we also talked about ALFOY timeline. And so depending on how quickly progress is made on accessing, we talked in our last Technology Committee meeting about this. Committee meeting. So Ms. Torba and I and Mr. Boyer are probably more well-versed. But as far as that timeline with ALFOY5, depending on the speed with which that problem of accessing, you know, like past grades and attendance and curricular counselor notes from, from prior years, perhaps that timeline would be affected by ALFOY5 and, you know, we need to work with them on that, that timeline aspect as well. So that's a really good point. Just making everybody aware of how those might, I hadn't even thought of that until you brought it up. Okay. All right. You're good. Mr. Boyer, you're good? Okay, okay. All right. So. Any other questions or comments on this item? Can I take a vote? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Business and Finance, Items 8A through C. If no one objects, I will take these together. I'll read them off.
Hold on. If you're gonna rope, then rope D and E in too.
Oh, did I miss two letters? I did, sorry. Through E, not C. I think I didn't put my, I think I, I think I saw the C as an E or something like, I'll put my glasses on. Thank you, Mr. Boyer. I agree. Items A through E. Anyone object? Those include the bills list for October 28th for this month, the Treasuries Report and Investment Report for the month of July, which is revised, and also for August. The appointment of Berkheimer Director, that the, the appointment of the Director of Business Services and the Assistant Director of Business and Finance to serve as the liaison with Berkheimer Tax Innovations for the purpose of accessing and processing information regarding EIT and LST tax collections for the school district. The approval of a copier lease agreement with the municipal capital finance as attached there competitively bid through Co-Stars, Co-Stars, sorry. And the property tax refunds per the attachment to the agenda. Any objection to taking those together?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll kind of a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Maud.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer, for the second. Any questions or comments? And yes, Ms. Reinhardt, and I apologize usually I give Mr. Pepe a chance to weigh in on any notable things before he asks your question. I'll let him do that.
I'm just gonna give you a quick overview on some of these. So obviously the bills list is pretty standard. The Treasuries Report, the reason why we have it revised is we actually have a little bit more money. And that was an account, an investment account that we now added into the report. And that was in discussions with the auditor. That's the $220,000 account that's added to there. And that was actually originally set up for the construction project of the elementary school, Hopewell. And since the construction project has concluded, I'd like to close that by folding that into the general fund. But believe it or not, there's still an outstanding about $25,000 hold from the township regarding some shrubbery or something that was supposed to be done to get the EPDM closeout. So that, that, or NDPTS closeout. So that's why that's on there as a revision. And obviously we carried that into August as well. The Berkheimer, I'm already set up on Berkheimer, but I want to add my assistant. And in order to do that, I need to have the resolution. I want to make sure they do not take me off. And that's just for us to run reports. And the copier lease, that's just adding one additional piece of equipment based on actual need at the high school guidance or attendance office. And that's monthly equipment payments of 125. The service is already folded into the existing contract, so there's no cost with that. And the property tax refunds, again, standard fare for the month.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Reinhardt, you had a question unless it was covered in that explanation?
Yeah, for Mr. Pepe. I understand the bills list is a vendor list, not a list of line item details that are purchased. And I guess I get concerned when I see something like $13,000 for Amazon. I've brought this up before. And I don't know how we get around it. It's pretty intuitive when you look at the vendor list and the detail, what the purchase was for. Except when you get to vendors like Amazon, when there's probably either a multitude of small purchases or one large purchase. And I'm not asking you to tell me what that, those purchases were, but I'm wondering if we really need, for the purpose of transparency, some sort of limit or minimum where, for example, if the purchase with a vendor is over $10,000 and involves multiple items, that, that detail is provided. It's just for a suggestion for future reporting.
Yeah, I think it's a great question, and I'd be happy to give you a little bit of background on it. Just because it's going through Amazon, it's still subject to the same purchase procedures as far as review and approval. So if there's any purchase that's over $4,000 in addition to me reviewing it, it's got to go to the superintendent for review. It's already been approved at the building level. Most of these are things like $178, $28.94, $77. There's a ton of purchases that end up rolling up into the final number that you see. We do have an Amazon account set up because we get an additional discount by setting it up as a corporate account. At the IU this past week, I was looking at the cooperative, one of the IUs puts together, and it's PEPM. And it's the Pennsylvania Consortium for Additional Savings. We can get an additional 20% with Amazon purchasing through that cooperative. What we found years ago, I think going back at least a decade, most districts were purchasing from Amazon because they had a better price. So as a collective cooperative purchasing, we get an even better price. But even though it's a lot of, you know, one-offs, they still get the scrutiny and review at the building level for every purchase.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, the transportation for Christ Transportation and Normans for roughly $198,000 and $375,000. Is that for one month?
Yeah, the Christ, the Christ bills are for August and September.
Okay.
And they also include everything from the debate field trips to the cheerleading transportation, athletics, football. So it's not just for our transporting to and from school. It's also for co-curricular activities and clubs.
And the $198 for Normans, is that one or two months?
Yeah, that's a couple of months as well. And that involves all of our special education routes. There's a lot of small one-offs with vans. They're, they're not the big 54-passenger buses that you would look at with Christ. But yes, that's for multiple things. And this is where I've said month over month for the public to take advantage of our busing system as we pay a lot of money for it. It's the largest expense in our budget for the most part, and it's underutilized.
I, I thank you for finishing my sentence, Mr. Maud. Yes, I'm going to be redundant here. That's close to $600,000. And when I look around the district, the buses are not even a quarter full. When I watch and listen to social media, I hear parents talking about kids driving and needing parking spaces. Yet the taxpayers are putting out this kind of money for transportation that's not being utilized. And I guess my suggestion would be for the administration to perhaps talk with other school districts that may have tried to crack this nut and reduce transportation costs. Are there any strategies out there to do that?
Dr. Mann and I have talked about this on many occasions in the past. Yeah, and keep in mind that the Norman's Bus Service is also transporting non-public students that we're required to transport. So that billing's broken down $84,227 for non-pubs for September and $112,887 for our regular students for September.
I understand.
And actually, good comments all around. I would add that perhaps if you're trying to look for, you know, you're looking at empty buses, especially at the secondary level is kind of what I'm hearing.
Well, it's not just at the secondary. They line up at the elementary school. Parents are driving kids to school. And, you know, look, I'm not suggesting we solve this or discuss this at this meeting, but I just think, you know, we keep coming back to, well, that's the way it has to be, or these are the rules, or this is what has to happen. And I really think this is a nut that needs to get cracked. It's very, very expensive for taxpayers. It's huge. And when you look at the cost per student for transportation, it's giant.
One of the challenges that we have is we have to provide busing because we're required by law. So once the seats are allocated, then whether they are, you know, on that bus that day or for the balance of the week, we can't give the seat away. One of the things that the terminal does also is staggering buses. So that based on the different start times with the high school and the elementaries, they'll send a route out for the high school and then send that same bus back out to pick up for an elementary. And efficiencies are important to us as far as applying for our state aid and transportation. So they, they and we do try to coordinate as much as possible to ensure, and they're constantly adjusting routes throughout the year based on special ed needs as well.
And all I was going to say at the secondary level is a great number of our students are active in some before school, but mostly after school activities. And we do not provide activity buses after school at all. So it is very difficult for kids to participate in those activities, and it's impossible for them to ride a bus home. And so part of, if we could crack that nut as well, that would really benefit students and parents, especially dual-working parent and households. So I just didn't want, you know, I appreciate your approach to the efficiency and your concern about those secondary buses. I just wanted to acknowledge that it's really, really difficult.
And one of the other things that we have had a discussion about with trying to even save more money with transportation, be more efficient, is looking into purchasing some vans for athletics so that we can do some of our own transporting, rather than being reliant on some of these transporters that charge us a good buck to run a bus that may not be full.
And I'll just say briefly, having looked at this issue at great length, you, you know, you could increase the amount, the distance that students have to go from their home to the bus stop on average. And that would ultimately eliminate some bus routes. Some districts will say we don't transport above eighth grade or seventh grade, whatever it happens to be. The issue, the problem though, is that it is one of, to a degree diminishing returns because transportation is one of our more highly reimbursables. And so to the extent that we cut a route and save $75,000, we also are cutting the reimbursement we get from the state. And so it's not, it's not quite as straightforward as, say, a reduction in staff or, you know, turning the lights out because there is that reimbursement component which runs fairly high even for a district with our aid ratio. So there is, there are ways to do it, but it pretty much would, and I'm not saying we're efficient and we can't find ways to do it, but we will reach a point fairly quickly of diminishing returns with respect to the services that are providing. And there are also elements of equity involved because, while many students will have no problem getting a ride, others who are in a, you know, a, a more challenging situation will have to more heavily rely on, on the bus with parents working or whatever it happens to be. So it's a, it's a challenge. One that we're working on, but one that does have its, it's a nut, I guess, as we're calling it tonight.
Yeah, for the record, for me, it's about utilization by the public for the service. It's there. We're paying for it. And I just encourage people to use a bus if they can possibly do it. It's, it's the bottom line for me.
All right. Thank you. No other questions on any of these items A through E? Thank you, Mr. Boyer, for pointing that out.
And just so you're aware, because you asked a question, we receive about $1.9 million in subsidy for transportation.
What's the, what's the yearly spend on that, Mr. Pepe? What's the yearly spend then? Average?
The expenditures are more than that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure off the top of my head how much we're spending there, but it's more. Yeah.
All right. Good questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
And Madam President, if I can just give you a overview on the next one before you call it, if that's okay? So under support service, it looks like we have a lot going on, but not really. Some of these things are compact. The first one, Provident Energy Electric Supply Bid, that's our typical bid that we go out with through consortium. And that actually came back very positive for us. And of the bid, and this is, they're forward-looking, this bid won't start until July of 2025. And that's through Provident Energy, and we're in the consortium with about 20-something other school districts. The eight bidders for the gas were BP, Freepoint, Constellation, WGL, NRG, Smart Energy, and Dyn Energy. New Wave Energy did not bid. So we had seven bids come in. The best price that's being recommended at 24 months is the .05608. And that is slightly, slightly more than we're currently at. We're at about .05 something. I don't remember. But this is the second go-around. The last time they went out, it was closer to .07, so that we didn't award. And the average was .057. The median was .057. So you can see that at .05608, that's pretty good. It's a 20, 24-month bid with 100% tolerance, meaning that regardless of our usage, we're going to pay the same rate. There's no penalty if we under or over utilize the service. So that's recommended. The part on there that needs to be corrected is I'm going to take out pending solicitation review. Solicitors not need to review that. That's already done by them. I actually copied it over when I was doing the next resolutions. The next resolutions, the bid award for the chiller replacement at Liberty Bell, it's broken out into two separate bids. We had the HVAC bid that came in at $623,800 and the electric portion of that bid that came in at $56,800. We again had a number of bidders. We're very happy with the review. The bids have been reviewed by EI Associates, and they've also been reviewed by Jonathan over at Kingsbury. So we're in, we're in good shape, and these came in under budget. And I don't want to give our budget out, but we did really well. Let's see. The PCCD grant, again, this is really, our assistant superintendent has been working on this with our facility director. And the PCCD grant, to make sure that we fully expend it, we, you know, the recommendation was that we enhance our communication capability with radios for safety at our schools. And the, the proposal that we got was $36,761. The grant will cover $24,500 of it. I recommended that the remaining $12,200 come out of the general fund. I discussed that with Dr. Mann. He agreed. So that's why that's on the agenda tonight. And that's it. If they have any other questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. Any other questions about any of that information? Thanks, Mr. Pepe, for the overview.
Just the one on the, the radios. So is that for just the main, like, campus here? Will that repeater distance all work for Hopewell and Liberty Bell too?
We're, we're actually getting two repeaters, which is why there is a little bit of an increased cost. So before purchasing any additional radios, we want to make sure those repeaters reach. If not, we will have to do a phase two of that. But we, we do need to. But it will be for these three schools here to communicate and our central office as well.
Thank you. And is this the acquisition of additional radios or these are, this is just the, replacing a different system?
They'll actually be newer, more operational from a communication perspective.
Replacing older?
Yes. And we will, and if they don't, if they do reach, we will look for an acquisition of additional radios. If not, we will repurpose the current existing radios to the other campuses or to the other two schools if they are in need of workable, I mean, they're functional, but if these are in better condition, we'll repurpose while we do phase two.
And the intent is that radios are distributed to every, or classroom, or could you describe?
Not classrooms.
Right, okay.
That would disrupt it.
Yeah, I would think. I was just gonna say, okay, when you're talking about phases, I'm like, that's a lot of radios.
Oh, for key personnel, you know, administration, we have, we have them in the main office areas. We do allow health and PE, obviously while they're outside.
Right.
Those types of, but we try to avoid them in classroom locations because it is disruptive. It is, it is a distraction.
Yep. No, that makes sense for those remote locations like PE or nursing staff. Yeah, yeah.
One other question I have then too, from an athletics standpoint, is the plan to incorporate or allow usage from an athletics standpoint? Is the plan to incorporate or allow usage from an athletic standpoint being that we're not in buildings, they're out, and we only have one or two trainers available?
Those radios will be available at that time after hours if that's, if the athletic department needs them, that's a wise use.
Yeah, that's a great question, Eric. You, you stole that out of my head. I've encountered that before. That would be great if it could be dual-purpose like that.
As long as they're returned in charge.
As long as they're returned in charge.
I can only speak on behalf of softball and baseball.
All right. Thank you. All right, seeing, any other questions? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, Mr., you're right, I do need a message. Mr. Pepe gave his explanation. Thank you for items A through D. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Items nine, A through D carry unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the human resources, we have a human resources report attached here. I don't believe we have any extended retirements in this particular round, which we always like to recognize. If I am mistaken and one was added, somebody please let me know. I want to acknowledge those long-term type retirements and departures. And we also have a policy second reading of those policies we covered at our last meeting. Could I have a motion to approve items 10A through B? Thank you, Mr. Carney. Thank you, Ms. Torba, for the second. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Seeing none?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Reinards? Could you hold your button? Thank you.
I understand that we've appointed an assistant or an acting assistant principal at the middle school. Are we advertising for that position and are we recruiting for that position for permanent replacement?
Yes, our, our thought was that we very definitely, administration at least proposed to have a very competitive, widely advertised and posted search for a permanent replacement for that position. Our thought was we would be much more advantaged doing so in the spring when more applicants would be available for our pool. And so thus our recommendation to have an interim assistant principal between now and that time.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm sorry? Oppose? Dr. Wayak opposes? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Moving on to committee reports. We have committee reports. I think a great deal of the education committees and policy committees are contained in this agenda. Anything else to add from facilities or?
ACMC, we will be meeting mid-month in November, and our next education committee will be November 4th at 4:30. We're going to be getting updates on the comprehensive plan, full-day kindergarten, we'll go over that, library renovation, we're going to look at a math curriculum review, and I just want to thank the board again for your vote. LCTI, we met on October 23rd. I sent the board a written, so this will be shorter. Our next meeting is November 25th, but unfortunately, that's the same night as the Southern High District School Board meeting, so we'll have to figure that out. And 2023 LCTI Friend of CTE Award went to the executive director at Da Vinci Science Center.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll, I'll just speak, I think the last meeting, I wasn't here, I was working storm support for my job, but I think Mr. Pepe covered it. But I do want to just make mention to everybody here that the library project is moving along really well. We're very pleased on behalf of the work that Alloy is doing. They're getting in here, we're moving things along. We actually have seen preliminary drawings from just, what, one meeting essentially with Alloy? So things are looking very good. We're very excited from that standpoint, so stay tuned for some more details as that project moves along. And if there's any kind of input, I think there is community coming up for that.
We have staff and students scheduled at our next meeting for a steering committee meeting to get their feedback based on preliminary renderings, just of initial discussions. We have staff and students, I think it's November 6th, I believe is the date.
Yeah, and we're, we're going to be given an update on Monday to the facilities committee with a lot of the stuff you just talked about and kind of where we, where we are and where we're going.
Perfect. Awesome. So that's all I wanted to just provide on that update.
All right, thanks. I just have a really quick CLIU report, which is CLIU board meeting, there was a great presentation on all the services they offer. And the one thing that was commented upon that one of the services the IU offers that is, you know, perhaps underutilized, and I wanted to, are we good? Yeah, we're all contemplating the same thing. We'll wrap this up for you quickly. There's a STEM lending library. So any teacher who wishes or staff member wishes to take advantage of the STEM lending library with programmable robotics or anything else, check that out at the IU. I'm going to keep moving this along so we can get out of here. New business? Anybody have any new business? Other business? The only thing I have is Dr. Mann, I believe we, at some point, we're going to see information on board docs and the possibility of, looking forward to that. I didn't know if it was on this agenda or if... Okay, so the board will receive information on this?
Well, I could just pass it out.
Great.
We, we actually have had very good internal conversations, we have quotes, and there is a, a sense among administration that they would really like to do this. There was a miser in Scrooge some time ago who said, "We're not doing this anymore because it costs too much." But in talking to them, they'd be very much interested in moving forward with it. And so I'll, I'll put this out and we can make some preliminary plans to...
Perhaps place it on a future agenda? Move this ahead of the next agenda?
No later than the next agenda.
Perfect.
And so we, I just distribute these as we have them.
All right. We have, Mr. Carney, I know you usually like to comment. We'd like to wrap this up super fast, though, if we can.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, just for the agenda, is it, would it, we don't have to take any action or would it be appropriate to make a motion to postpone until we have further information? Just don't act on that other agenda item?
Oh, we skipped, we skipped it. We're good.
All right. I just want to thank Ms. Sirfaz for allowing my wife to come in and teach a biology lesson. Election Day is coming up, November 5th. No matter who you vote for, please vote. Turn back your clock Saturday. Happy Diwali. It is now an official holiday in Pennsylvania. No, our students do not have off for it, but it was just signed into law. It is an official holiday. This week, I saw a mother suing Chatbot over the suicide of her son. And in response, Chatbot has put up guardrails for, and reading her complaint, I could see why she thought Chatbot had something to do with it. But Chatbot now has a 988 pop-up suicide prevention hotline, which I was happy to see our new IDs have that on. The fall theater production is a two-for-one sale, basically. You have the theater and then you have a talent, talent singing Broadway show, so it's a two-for-one ticket. Help yourself to some candy too on the way out. There's a bag up there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carney. All right, I am looking at this point for a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. Oh, visitor comment! I'm sorry. Did, no, you're right. You're absolutely right. Do we, did anyone sign in for visitor comment? Raise your hand. Okay. Ms. Dolan and Ms. Mance. We... I'm going to take a deep breath. So I'm just going to be transparent.
We have to have, we have a...
We have to have visitor comment as a matter of legal course. I'm gonna... No, here's the deal. I'm going to be very, wait, I'm going to be very transparent with everybody while we're trying to like wrap this up. Pause. So ready? Everybody, we're all good. There are windows right here to the outside and the board is starting to get whiffs of like, smells like someone's having a nice bonfire. We're not sure where it's coming from, so we'd like the administrators to be able to check it out as soon as possible. And that's why you see them all talking to each other and saying, "We're going to go figure out who's burning trash outside just so we can find the source. We're smelling smoke right now, but we have been assured that we have custodians spanning and we have heat detectors and smoke detectors and..." But the board currently smells like we need smores up here. I'm just saying. But having said that, I'm going, hot show next door is what I'm hearing for the parent preview. So that's why you will see the what's going on up here kind of a look. And I assure you, it smells like somebody's burning leaves, but, and Mr. Pepe's going to check too, so I'm going to tell the audience that all the administrators, feel free to walk out and find whoever's burning leaves out there and tell them. But I'm going to rely on all of those systems, and we are going to take visitor comment until we are told otherwise. Sound like a plan? All right. Having said that, Ms. Lobley, the first visitor comment is, because I already shut my computer? Nicole Dolan, yes. And we're all just gonna, there are windows. We have doors right here, they're going to let us know if we have a... Yeah, you can, administrators, if you would like to help in the search, feel free or whatever. Dr. Trinkle is saying, or if not, you can just stay, whichever. Ms. Dolan? The floor is yours.
Okay. This is, all right.
Try it, we'll let you know. Yep.
Okay. It's on. Didn't come prepared to speak. This is just about the buses thing. I certainly don't represent the whole community. I just wanted to share some anecdotes of things that I know of in my experiences and some friends and that, you know, people talk, right? So one of the things is that I think is sometimes a deterrent for people using the bus system is that a lot of them are long bus rides. Not all, obviously, but as an example, like I know somebody who lives like a five or six-minute car drive from their school and their kid's bus ride time is 40 minutes. So that's certainly not the standard, I understand, but I'm just going to put it out there as somebody who lives even that close might be like, why is, why is my time so long? Obviously, that factors into, will the child be back at home in time for me to get them fed and changed and homework to the next activity or anything like that? I have certainly spent some times where I pick my kid up because that gives them an extra hour of life, if you think about it, because even though my kid's bus ride is only half an hour, that, that helps, if, if their whole day is packed, that lets them go to bed half an hour earlier and, and wake up half an hour later. So that's an extra hour of sleep in that case. This is going to be an ongoing issue. It's not anything that I think can easily be resolved, but having that long amount of unsupervised time, especially in this day and age where lots of kids have devices, different, different versions of shenanigans can happen on a bus. But that's always going to be an ongoing problem, no matter how long your bus ride or how you do it or anything like that. I understand. The, just trying to see if there are any other thoughts that I had on this. I don't know if this is something that admin has already thought about, and I don't know if this is a silly idea because I realize it has more overhead, but what if there were smaller buses and more of them so that we had more routes, which would mean fewer kids to pick up, and then those, everybody's bus rides would go down? Obviously, that means more bus drivers, which obviously boots up the costs. So I understand that. But at the same time, if the goal is utilizing something that we have to do anyways, would that be something that encouraged more people to use the bus system? Just throwing it out there, I'm sure there's lots of pros and cons involved. Again, just anecdotes of people that I know of, not representative of everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. And our next visitor comment is Ms. Connie Mance? Oh, I'm not, I'm wrong. Ms. Julie Byrd is next.
Hi, everybody. I'm also want to talk about busing concerns. I want to begin by saying that my children ride the bus as often as possible, roughly every morning and afternoon with only one of my two children getting consistently picked up by me one day a week because of the timing of after-school activities. They love the bus, love, love the bus. My kindergartner, in particular, gets really upset if she doesn't get to ride the bus twice, and we've had tears, and it's a whole thing. So please know that I'm coming from a place of my kids love the bus, we use the bus. Thank you for providing the bus. But since it was discussed and efficient transportation was also brought up in particular, including staggering route times between elementary and secondary levels, I'd also like to suggest considering a little bit more of a stagger between the Hopewell and Liberty Bell times and the IS, the intermediate school, start and end time for future years, obviously not today. Looking ahead for myself in particular and watching parents who already have a child in both an elementary school and the intermediate school, they struggle on days where pickup is necessary to get both kids picked up on time. They're rushing, they tell me they're driving on safely, running through yellow lights, doing things that are objectively dangerous to get their kids from school so schools not call in, "Hey, we need you to take your kid home now." So for more experienced parents, parents with kids older than mine, literally five to 10 minutes would make all the difference in driving safely between the schools. And this is something I would, will personally need to manage myself next year with one kid at Hopewell and one at the intermediate school and still involved in that same after-school activity where we have to be across the valley by 4:30 for it to start with him fed and dressed appropriately and so on down the line. So I humbly request an additional staggering of five to 10 minutes between Hopewell and Liberty Bell and then the IS start and end times just for the safety of our children in our own cars, let alone hitting buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lobley, our next speaker is Ms. Mance. Maybe it wasn't a successful sign-in. If, we'll get your information afterwards if it didn't register on the piece of paper. We're good.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you all. I sparingly attended board meetings, but I thank you for your time and your talents and all the energy you guys put into the kids and this district and the community. I know we tabled graduation. I just, the only thing I would like to take into consideration while we all stand here and throw out dates, just that I'm glad we're reconsidering other times other than the official last day of school. When we think of our students, and most of you have either had graduates or are about to have graduates, and I challenge you to go home, ask your child if their final exam is on May 30th. Hey, how about you come back on Monday, the 9th, and let's graduate? Kind of seems like a slap in the face. So I graduated from Southern High Anzago. I've been attending graduations since, I think, 2018 when we started going to Stabler. As long as I can remember, the children have finished up and graduated early. It's a tradition, it's a custom. I think seniors look forward to it, and it's an honor they have earned after years of work. So as you guys consider when we're graduating, please take into consideration, these children have worked and earned the ability to graduate a little earlier and get out of here before their peers, okay? Just in case you didn't know what that day would look like, the only children attending school on the 9th would be, elementary would get out half-day. Anybody that only had a final would attend that day. The seniors would be the only ones coming in to rehearse graduation, hang around, and then come back on the official last day of school. And I just can't imagine any senior not feeling like this is a slap in the face and that we could do better for them and for our families in Southern High. So please just take that into consideration and when you're looking at the options. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to let everybody know that thanks to various administrators and custodians scouring the community, we've found the burn pile. It is indeed outside, so that explains the smoky smell that we are getting through these windows, but it's completely outside, happy to announce.